Good evening. I'd like to call this Tuesday, December 15th, 2015 meeting of Middletown City Council's order. If you please stand and join me in moment meditation and the pledge of allegiance to the flag. Come on in.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston, here. Ms. Scott Jones?
Here.
Mr. Mulligan?
Here.
Mr. Precard?
Here.
Mayor Mulligan?
Here. We have a series of a number of presentations tonight. The first offer for a couple of local businesses. I'd like to invite Mr. Jeff Pullman down to the podium to receive a recognition. No, that's all right. You're fine. I'll read to the crowd. I see these guys all the time. They're a lot more important than they are. But certainly want to recognize a lot of local businesses. Twenty-five years here in Middletown. We've got two this evening we're recognizing is certainly a great anniversary, great commitment to Middletown. Certainly appreciate the involvement a lot of our local businesses have in the community and really the impact they play from, you know, everything from employing folks to taking care of people's needs to sponsoring ball teams and different things like that. I know our local business community's been strong and supportive. So on behalf of council, we have this certificate appreciation to present to recognize your efforts here. Whereas, with fourteen years of experience working at his father's company, J&amp;J Tire, Jeff Pullman opened his first Jeff Pullman Tire and Auto Service location on November 1st, 1990, at 3003 Dixie Highway in Hamilton, Ohio. Business quickly grew and he opened a second location in 1992 at 303 Second Street in Hamilton's downtown area. And whereas, in the summer of 1994, he heard there was a vacant tire store in Middletown at 404 North Verity Parkway. He was not familiar with the area and hesitant about the opportunity until he and his wife, Ellen, were invited to dinner at the Manchester Inn by members of city council and the Middletown Chamber who offered their support. Impressed with their efforts, he decided to pursue a lease with Levco and opened for business in the fall of 1994. Eventually purchased the property and has made numerous upgrades to the building and property to maintain the appearance as his thanks to the city for its support. And whereas, as a family-owned and operated business, Jeff Pullman Tire and Auto Service has been serving Butler County, Ohio since 1990. Jeff Pullman Tire has five locations in Fairfield, Hamilton, Middletown, and Oxford, Ohio. They offer a variety of tires and auto services to fit everyone's needs. And whereas, Jeff and Ellen have been married for thirty-four years and reside in Hamilton. They have five children. Their oldest son, Ryan, serves as general manager of Jeff Pullman Tire and Auto Service Incorporated. Jeff has been an active supporter of youth sports in all the communities represented by his locations and has served on the board of directors of many groups along with coaching baseball, basketball, and soccer. He is currently on the coaching staff for the Baden Girls varsity soccer program and is head coach of the junior varsity program. In 2008, he was recognized by the Hamilton Chamber as the Small Business Person of the Year. And whereas, for the past twenty-five years, customers have trusted Jeff Pullman Tire and Auto Service for their auto repair and tire needs. Now therefore, I, Lawrence Mulligan, mayor of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, on behalf of city council, hereby proclaim December 5th, 2015 as the day fitting to recognize and celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of Jeff Pullman Tire and Auto Service. Congratulations, Jeff. (applause). Take this time to thank the city of Middletown for our support and look forward to many more years working with you. Thank you. Thank you.[225.62][225.62](applause). Next, I'd like to invite Mr. Roosevelt Robinson down from Middletown Ford. He's also celebrating their twenty-fifth year here in Middletown and certainly appreciate you joining us this evening, too. Likewise, you know, Middletown Ford has really been an institution here, serviced a lot of folks' needs for cars. And I know, I think we're what, the only Ford dealership in Butler County? Is that true?
Yes.
That's what I thought. Okay. I was thinking through that. That's a nice testament and especially with the times we've been through, the fact that we have a, you know, local business that's done so well through the challenging times with all the consolidation in the auto industry. So on behalf of city council, we have this presentation to present. Whereas, Roosevelt Robinson III purchased Middletown Ford in November 1990. The previous dealer had gone out of business, so he arrived with no employees, no inventory, and two cigar boxes full of keys. He purchased the dealership property in 1995 and changed the address from Titus Avenue to 1750 North Verity Parkway. He expanded the dealership real estate with the purchase of the old Village Station property in 1999 and the Clock property in 2002. And whereas, in 2006, he purchased the Lincoln Mercury franchise and moved it to the Middletown Ford site. He held the Lincoln Mercury until 2010 when Ford Motor Company discontinued the Mercury brand and then sold Lincoln back to Ford. Over the years, Roosevelt Robinson has remodeled the showroom, the used car office, the service department, and the parts department. In 2015, Middletown Ford had a major renovation and addition. A new 3,000-square-foot showroom was added and in the old showroom was converted to a larger customer lounge. The service area is currently being renovated and should be completed by the end of this year. And whereas, for the past twenty-five years, Middletown Ford has been leading the auto dealership and integral part of our community. Middletown Ford takes pride in the vehicles they sell and are committed to providing their customers with an excellent customer experience as well as quality service. Now therefore, I, Lawrence Mulligan, mayor of the city of Middletown, counties of Butler and Warren, state of Ohio, on behalf of city council, hereby proclaim December 15th, 2015, as the day fitting to recognize and celebrate the twenty-fifth anniversary of Middletown Ford. Congratulations.[356.31][356.31](applause).
Briefly, just want to thank everyone in Middletown surrounding area that's supported us over the years. It's been a great twenty-five years. Thank you.
Thank you.[371.81][371.81](applause). Now for a couple other special presentations, we have two council members that are serving their last meeting tonight. So for the first, I'd like to invite Ms. Anita Scott Jones up to the podium to receive a bit of recognition and appreciation. It's, uh, we've been together for what, eight-plus years or more and have been involved in many different things, so it's hard to really quantify all of that. We did want to certainly recognize the work that Anita's done over her time here on council. Been involved in so many different things here in the community and really had an impact and really took and jumped into the role of city council member with quite a bit of passion and exuberance and really appreciate her service. So on behalf of council and myself personally, we have this certificate to present. Whereas, Anita Scott Jones is born and raised in Montgomery, Alabama. She comes from a family that placed emphasis on giving back to the community, a lesson she took to heart. Anita was inducted to the Robert E. Lee High School Hall of Fame in 1997. She received a Bachelor of Science from Auburn University and a Master of Business Administration degree from the University of Phoenix. Anita moved to Middletown in the year 2000. She soon immersed herself in the community and began serving the public. And whereas, Anita Scott Jones has served as an at-large council member since 2008 and served as vice mayor for two years during her tenure. When she decided to run for council, she pledged to be accessible to the people and to use her education to help answer citizens' questions even if they were difficult and uncomfortable. If she didn't have the answers, she would get them and believed that she owed the people she represented what was right, fair, and true. And whereas, Anita Scott Jones is currently the hospital relations manager, community outreach at Atrium Medical Center, and is an adjunct professor at Cincinnati State Technical and Community College. She was also college instructor for a variety of subjects at Brown Mackey College in Cincinnati for four years and the director to career services for one year. And whereas, over the past eight years, Anita Scott Jones and her fellow city council members have guided our city through the worst economic storms, faced many challenges, including improving aging infrastructure, providing opportunities for decent-paying jobs, and continuing economic development. The city of Middletown is grateful for her dedicated leadership. And whereas, Anita Scott Jones has assisted hundreds of citizens over the years and has been very active in many organizations throughout the community and serves as a board member with the Butler County Regional Transit Authority and is an executive committee member of the Warren County Municipal League and is an action committee member with the Middletown Area United Way. She has sown enthusiasm and generosity in all her endeavors and has given freely of her time and talent beyond what was required or expected. Anita has earned the respect and admiration of all those with whom she has worked. Her creativity, hard work, energy, and dedication have positively impacted the city of Middletown and its citizens. Now therefore, I, Lawrence Mulligan, by the powers vested in me as mayor of the city of Middletown, on behalf of city council, city staff, and the citizens of our community, do hereby present this certificate of recognition as a token of our appreciation and wish you well in all your future endeavors. Congratulations.[569.51][569.51](applause). Showing this off, this is a sample, but you'll get a nice wrapped copy. Amy didn't want me to mess it up or get it fingerprinted, I think, up here. But a nice Jack Howard print of the city building, just to look back and remember the good meetings that we've had here, not necessarily the bad ones. But would you like to share a few words?
Thank you. Um, wow, someone captured my life and for that, I'm truly grateful. Mr. Mayor, it's been a pleasure. You've been the longest-standing member of council that I've served with and I do have a few more comments during my individual council comments, which I'll make at that point. But it has been an honor and a privilege to serve in this capacity. I am not done serving. I'm just done at this point with serving on this committee and this commission. To the citizens, the 4,000 citizens who voted for me in this last election, I thank you. And to the ones who voted for me two previous elections, I thank you. To my colleagues on council, it's been a pleasure. To Mr. Mayor, it's been an honor. Thank you.
All right. And Amy, we have those for both Joe and for Anita?
Yes.
Okay. Perfect.
Wrapped.
Wrapped, yes. Hands get a little, you know. It's important stuff. So to recognize our last individual here, my brother, Vice Mayor Joe Mulligan. Certainly an honor and privilege to have served with your brother. It's happened before, but not too frequently, but certainly brought a great perspective to council in the four years and I know he's got great experience and looking forward to continuing to serve the citizens of Middletown in so many different ways. So on behalf of council, we have this certificate of appreciation to present. Whereas, Joe Mulligan was born and raised in Middletown, Ohio. After graduating from Bishop Fenwick High School, he earned his Bachelor of Business Administration Marketing from the University of Notre Dame, graduated cumulatum. He later earned his law degree, magna cumulatum, from the University of Dayton School of Law. And whereas, Joe Mulligan is currently an attorney at Zinger and McClosland and is in his fifth year of private practice in Dayton and Middletown. He served as a law clerk extern for the United States District Court for the Southern District of Ohio. Joe Mulligan has experienced in employment law matters, business litigation, wills, probate administration, business transaction, and domestic relations disputes. Before attending law school, Mulligan enjoyed a successful career as an advertising sales manager for television and cable operations in Ohio and Pennsylvania. And whereas, Joe Mulligan has served as an at-large council member since 2012 and has served as vice mayor for two years during his tenure. He's also been involved in other, several other community organizations, including Bishop Fenwick High School Alumni Association, Browns Run Country Club, Downtown Middletown Incorporated, City of Middletown Charter Review Committee, the Middletown School District Facilities Committee, the Middletown Community Foundation Marketing Committee, Hospice Care of Middletown Board of Trustees, Middletown Area YMC Advisory Board, the City of Middletown Convention and Visitors Bureau Board, Middletown Symphony, and Supports and Encourage Low-Income Families, a community action agency in Butler County. He is a 2012 graduate of leadership class of the Chamber of Commerce, serving Middletown, Monroe, and Trenton. And whereas, Joe Mulligan's background in business, public service, and law has been instrumental in keeping the city's, city of Middletown's budget in line, increasing efficiencies, reducing costs, and maintaining accountability. He knows the importance of listening and working with others in the community to make positive progress. The city of Middletown is a better place because of his service. Now therefore, I, by the powers vested in me as mayor of the city of Middletown, on behalf of city council, city staff, and citizens of our city, do hereby present this certificate of recognition as a token of our appreciation and wish him well in all his future endeavors. Congratulations, Joe.
Thank you.[811.13][811.13](applause).
Thank you, Your Honor. Just have a few remarks at this time. Around the time that I was considering a run for city council back in 2011, former Pittsburgh Mayor Tom Murphy was in Cincinnati to dedicate a park down there and his remarks were published in the newspaper and they resonated with me because they were very relevant to what Middletown was and is going through. He said on that day, "I am from Pittsburgh, a city that was once known as hell with the lid off." So now, so how in thirty years did Pittsburgh come to be ranked by Economist Magazine and Forbes Magazine as the most livable city in America? It happened because thirty years ago, public and private leaders made a decision that they were going to redefine what it meant to be from Pittsburgh. In a similar way, we are redefining what it means to be for Middletown. The work that we have done in recent years is reshaping and redefining Middletown and what we want this city to be in the future. I bring up the example of Pittsburgh because we must recognize that we are not alone in this fight. We are not alone in rebuilding a struggling city. Other municipalities have been in far worse shape and they've come back stronger and revitalized, and we can do the same here. On council, we set an example of fiscal conservatism and made policy decisions that allowed our local government to be a catalyst for positive change. We collaborated with other government agencies to gain efficiencies and cut costs. We had the courage and resolve to modernize local government, reduce spending, and balance budgets, and we did it all without raising taxes. Our improved city finances are due in part to reduced spending, but the other component of improved finances is our robust economic development. Since 2011, Middletown has experienced over $1 billion in new commercial investment, either committed or completed. When business leaders look to Middletown, they see competent elected officials who value job creation and economic growth. The Middletown comeback is a story that's still being written and I'm proud of the role that I played in it. City council and staff can take pride in the results so far and gain inspiration to continue the positive progress. I extend my thanks to the city employees who are in the trenches every day, working hard to deliver services, provide safety protection, and rebuild our infrastructure. I'm grateful to the Middletown residents who gave me the opportunity to serve. I hope to continue my public service to represent the 53rd district in the Ohio House of Representatives. I will take with me the important lessons of the past four years, and that is the government can be a source of good for communities when its leaders recognize accountability and balance budgets and support policies and programs that protect taxpayers and foster economic growth. I offer my gratitude to my colleagues on council. I'm grateful for your service and I wish you continued success with, as the new council is seated in January. We've made great progress in recent years and yet there is still plenty of work to do. I thank you for this commendation and the print and again, all the best to you. Thank you.[1021.66][1021.66](applause).
All right. That brings us to our citizens' comments. A portion of received one card this evening. I'd like to invite Mr. Kevin Stamper down.
Good evening. If we could get your name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. Kevin Stamper, 2802 Roosevelt Boulevard, Middletown, Ohio, for the past forty-one years. I just wanted to take this moment to introduce myself to everybody who hasn't, who doesn't know me or hasn't met me. I know I've met with Anita and Tal and Scott. I just wanted a little bit about me. I have been the owner and operator for Great Scott Productions since 1996, right here in Middletown, Ohio. Have been a producer with TV Middletown for a little while, was the audiovisual coordinator for General Motors, and have had the pleasure of teaching both camera techniques and editing to instructors in both Butler and Warren Counties. Currently, I sit on the technical advisory board of Butler Tech for John Gunder's Digital Media Class. And for the last two months, and bring me to the point of why I'm here, with a full heart and 110% effort, I have ran Our Town TV. If you haven't heard about that or know what that is, it's a visual vision for the future of social TV in Middletown. First and foremost, we believe that no viewer should be left behind. That means millennials, Gen Xers, and baby boomers. So it's my intention to create different versions of each show that would allow each of those groups to absorb that information in their way. And that's just kind of the way things are kind of going now, so. I feel the time for competition is over. It's now time for cooperation. Our Town TV has been and will continue to forge partnerships that make sense in our community, giving everyone a voice and an outlet to express it, which brings me to one of the shows that's actually on tonight, if you want to go to ourtowntv.net. A little plug there. It's a blank canvas. This is other people's videos that we make sure that meets the standards of the community and then we put those on there and allow them to have a voice. A few things that set us apart. We're going to be highly interactive. We already are. All of our live streams, you can chat with the producers, the content creators, other people watching it. That's something that kind of the Gen X and millennial, that's nothing new for those guys. I guess I'm included in that now, but it's something new at this level of public or community access. For those people who don't get to an opportunity to see our streams, most of those programs will be uploaded within 24 hours, which that's kind of the standard right now, and all of those streams will be available and are available right now on Facebook, will be available on Vimo, Twitch, YouTube, all of your devices, computers, laptops, surfaces. Wish I had one of those. Those are neat. And then also, I just wanted to really quickly touch, as of now, TV Middletown is a complete labor of love by me and there's been many people who's helped me and I do appreciate everybody and I wanted to just give them a moment that I, you know, couldn't do this all by myself and I've had some really great people backing me and some companies and so forth reaching out to me. I'm now getting calls daily through emails and Facebook also. There's the time. So let me give you one last pitch. We have a great thing coming out for Christmas, Middletown Civic Course and a bunch of other things are going to be on that, ourtowntv.net, and I do have a handout for you for the things that I knew I wasn't going to get to because the light was going to come on, so.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate you coming down this evening and sharing that.
Sure. Where would, do I?
Mr. Atkins can take that or if you want, so. All right. That brings us to our city manager reports. Mr. Atkins?
Good evening, Mayor and council. I've got a couple of things through tonight. First off, I did receive a letter which I forwarded on earlier from TV Middletown, dated December 10th, to me from Mike Scorti, president of the TV Middletown Board. That's a short letter. I am going to go ahead and read it so the public's aware. As of this date, which was December 10th, the TV Middletown Board has voted to cease all operations and permanently close TV Middletown. We have notified Time Warner Cable of our intentions to cease providing a signal to Channel 24 as of January 10th, 2016, per the agreement, which requires 30 days' notice. If the city of Middletown wishes to continue providing content on Channel 24, I would suggest you get in touch with Time Warner immediately. Our decision to stop providing all services is due to many factors. We realize that the local origination station cannot depend on regular financial support. We wanted to end on a high note, leaving the community with the memory of TV Middletown's high-quality programming. Many former viewers are now seeking local information via social media, an outlet we are not able to support, and we continue to offer the building for sale and equipment and for lease, excuse me, we continue to offer the building and equipment for lease or sale. The $20,000 the city has agreed to loan TV Middletown is still very much needed so that we can maintain the building until a sale is made. When the building is sold, we will return that $20,000 to the city immediately. Thank you for supporting TV Middletown through the years. We realize it's time to close as TV Middletown, like other institutions, has run its course. I received that yesterday, passed it along to council. I have contacted Time Warner Cable and told them that I would be discussing with you the future of Channel 24 and they are going to wait until they get some feedback from me as to what we intend to do long-term with Channel 24. As you're aware, we also received a proposal from Our Town TV to replace TV Middletown as a online source of this type of information for the public. At this time, I'm going to make a couple recommendations and ask that we follow this up at our retreat. First is, since the budget is passed and we do have the allocation set for $112,000 in the 2016 budget of TV Middletown, as soon as that becomes available, I would like to go ahead and get that $20,000 to TV Middletown to support their operations as they close down. I will work out the paperwork with them on how we get that back. Second, one of the things, as I had talked to Ty over the last few months about this process, is I know that there's equipment and I don't know what's over there and I don't know how much of it is required to continue to broadcast on Channel 24. With council's permission, I'd like to sit down with Ty over the next month before the retreat, get an understanding of what equipment's over there that might be useful, and see whether it makes sense to bring that equipment in-house here. Here, we do have a communications intern on staff now, full-time, and we are working on replacing the cameras in the building to be able to go online. There may be some efficiencies in scale to be able to take some of that equipment, install it here, and keep that channel going, but I don't know yet at this time. So at this time, I'd like to, again, move forward with the $20,000, talk to TV Middletown about what is over there and whether there's any benefit to us talking about purchasing some of that and installing it at the city. If that turns out not to be the case, my suggestion then is we take this up at the retreat in January and we further discuss where we go from now, whether we go shut it down or put out an RFP for proposals to provide this type of service, but that seems to be a logical step to get from here to there.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council, from Mr. Atkins on that? Okay. I don't know, I think you've got a good plan in place to evaluate that and look at the next steps, so.
Thank you. I'll have a more thorough relay of everything that I found out at the retreat in January.
Okay.
Second, I'd like to express my appreciation to outgoing council members Anita Scott Jones and Joe Mulligan. Their service to the city has been nothing short of exemplary and they have made my life and my job more enjoyable, both as community revitalization director and now as city manager. Their willingness to serve the public has made Middletown a better city and I want to take this moment to thank you both for all that you've done for me personally, for my family, for the city staff, and for the city as a whole, and I want to wish you both the success in your future endeavors. And that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That brings us to our consent agenda. Ms. Gank?
For your consideration this evening, we have to receive and file board and commission minutes from the library board from August 18th and September 15th, 2015, the historic commission from October 22nd, 2015, the park board from November 2nd, 2015, and the board of health from November 10th, 2015, to confirm personnel appointments of Nicole Hitt, dispatcher of Division of Public Safety, David Terrell, mechanic, Division of Municipal Garage, Brandon Ramirez and Jessica Payne, patrol officers, Division of Police, Karen Robinson, senior count clerk, Division of City Tax, to confirm the promotional appointments of fire lieutenants, Jess Chaley, Todd Steinbrenner, David Wright, and John Scranton, to confirm the termination of Brian Alexander, maintenance worker, to receive and file OSOP office for Timothy Haney, Steve Mohannon, Talbot Moon, and Lawrence Mulligan Jr., to authorize the city manager to enter into a professional services agreement with John Havel for tax process server services, to establish a contract with Hawkins Incorporated of Roseville, Minnesota for the purchase of hydrofluoric acid, HFS, in the amount of $2.65 a gallon to be used by the water treatment plant during the 2016 calendar year, and to recommend the purchase of liquid chlorine from Bond Chemical, Columbus, Ohio, in the amount of $0.74 per gallon for use at the wastewater treatment plant and $0.85 per gallon for use at the water treatment plant.
Okay. Thank you very much. Do we have a motion for the approval of the issues and actions as listed on the consent agenda?
So moved.
One second.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Scott Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Precard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. With that, I'd like to invite Chief Lally down for the pending ceremonies for our new fire lieutenants.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of city council and city manager. Atkins, we're here tonight to recognize four firefighters who have gone through the competitive process of being promoted to the position of lieutenant. These four individuals competed in a field that began with 29 firefighters and that's probably one of the larger groups of firefighters that I think I've ever seen compete for the lieutenant's position. So these four gentlemen were the firefighters who came out on top and for that, they should be extremely proud of and for the effort they put in, not only in this process of lieutenant, the effort they have put in over the last fifteen to eighteen years of their career to help the citizens of Middletown and be leaders in the fire service. So with that, I'm going to call them up from the top scorer to number four and --
We're here tonight to recognize four firefighters who have gone through the competitive process of being promoted to the position of lieutenant. These four individuals competed in a field that began with 29 firefighters, and that's probably one of the larger groups of firefighters that I think I've ever seen compete for the lieutenant's position. So these four gentlemen were the firefighters who came out on top, and for that, they should be extremely proud of, and for the effort they put in, not only in this process of lieutenant, the effort they have put in over the last 15 to 18 years of their career to help the citizens of Middletown and be leaders in the fire service. So with that, I'm going to call them up from the top scorer to number four, and we'll have the penning ceremony, and we'll start with firefighter Jess Chaley. And Jess is joined here by his girlfriend Amelie and daughters Reagan and Taylor. So if you would come on up, and they're going to take the firefighter badge off Lieutenant Chaley's coat and place his new lieutenant badge on. Who gets to take it off? Amelia gets to take it off, and the girl's going to put it on. She was worried about sticking her dad. And Jess, you probably didn't know this, but we'll give you about 15 seconds to say a few words.
Welcome to Quinn.
I really have nothing prepared. I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen, Council, and City Manager Atkins. Girls, Amelie, my mom and dad, thank you guys for all the support that you guys have given me over the years, and I hope I can continue to make you proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Next, we have firefighter Todd Steinbrenner. Todd is joined by his wife Amy, his daughters Abby and Brooke, and his son Isaac. So if you would come on up, and this is new lieutenant Todd Steinbrenner.
Thank you.
Put him on the spot, too, huh?
You know, these guys aren't that shy around the coffee table.
Well, again, I wasn't prepared either, so I want to thank members of Council and Mayor Atkins, or City Manager Atkins, and I want to thank you for the opportunity, and I've been here for, well, going on 19 years, so thank you for the opportunity and hope to be able to make the citizens and the Council proud for the remainder of my career, so thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Our next promoter, promotee is Brian Wright, firefighter Brian Wright, affectionately known as B-Dub. I couldn't let him go without giving his nickname out. Well, yeah, I don't know how David happened, but we'll fix it. Well, get a new name. Brian is joined here by his wife Karen and his boys Cooper and Chase. And I think Cooper and Chase fought it out over who gets to do the badge, right? And it was a tie, so they're both going to do it.
Okay.
Congratulations.
Thank you. First and foremost, I want to thank my family for their understanding and support through this whole process, all my friends that have helped and give, you know, encouragement and words of gratitude. Thanks to the Department, thanks for the City, and I hope to make everybody proud. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And finally, we have firefighter John Scranton, who is joined today by his wife Susan, his daughter Katie, son John David, and Michael.
ago to be a Middletown firefighter, and I know that my dad and my Uncle Vinny are looking down from heaven and are proud of me, and it makes me feel good. Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you.
John comes from a line of New York City firefighters, and his two cousins were in, on 9/11, were part of the 9/11 response. I've had the opportunity to meet them, and his Uncle Vinny, they're what, New York City firemen you picture. I thought they were going to get in a fight at his dad's funeral, but just firefighter, you know, how they are. But Council, I want to thank you, and it's, as Vice Mayor Mulligan said, you know, the Fire Department is probably a good picture of a department that is in the midst of reshaping and retooling and, you know, going the direction of getting back to making Middletown proud, and we'll continue that. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. All right, we have one motion item this evening, Ms. Gank?
Tom, to authorize a contract with Voya for the stop-loss coverage in 2016.
Ms. Atkins?
Good evening again, Mayor. Employee Benefits International coordinated the RFP for this process for our 2016 stop-loss coverage. There were two vendors that submitted bids, one of them was disqualified as a not-complete. Voya, our current vendor, submitted the only valid bid, and we are recommending that we contract with Voya in 2016 for stop-loss coverage.
Okay. Any questions, Ms. Atkins? All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to authorize a contract with Voya for the stop-loss coverage for 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Scott Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
All right, and that brings us to our Council comments this evening. Start with Ms. Bronston.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Went to a number of activities over the last two weeks since the last meeting, three of which were the charity ball, Second Ward Party, and our own chamber party, and a lot of festivities going on around Middletown. I understand there may be caroling tomorrow night at Governor's Square, so we are in that season. Most of my comments tonight, I guess, are surrounded by thanking Joe and Anita, our Vice Mayor and our Councilwoman, for all of their service to the community over the years. It takes a lot of courage and a lot of our time and effort to serve the City, and especially Anita, who's been here for a number of terms. So I just want to thank you for serving our City even when I was not on Council, and it's been a pleasure serving with you on Council. And Joe, the same with you, and I wish you Godspeed in all of your endeavors in the future, and looking forward to reading great things and hearing great things about what you're doing.
Thank you.
Ends my comments.
Thank you. Mr. Picard?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to congratulate the firefighters who were promoted to lieutenant. I'm sure that they'll serve the City well. Beyond that, I want to take a moment to thank Joe and Anita for their service to the City. Joe, it's been a pleasure to work with you for four years, through four difficult years of layoffs and cuts and so on and so forth, and you've always had great insight and input, and I appreciate your time and counsel. Anita, I didn't know you before I was elected, and you have left me with a memory that I will never forget, which was our very first council meeting, which is, I'm sure you recall what occurred, and the mayor is the only remaining council member who knows what occurred that evening, which led, of course, to your being named the Vice Mayor. And for the part that I had to play in that, I am proud that I made the selection that I did. You have served the City admirably. I've always been impressed with the fact that you're extremely well-prepared, that you ask the questions that need to be asked, that you do your best to inform the public of everything that is going on and to make them feel welcome, and to go out of your way to help the public. Again, personally, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I wish you the best of everything, and you're certainly somebody I will never forget. And the last thing I want to say is that Christmas is coming and New Year is coming, and as I always do, I encourage all of you to spend time with your family and friends and share it with each other. And as I indicated before Thanksgiving, there's plenty of opportunities to help all the families out there who need help, and I encourage all of you to do so, whether you volunteer or you make a contribution to the many agencies which are helping the less fortunate than us. Please do so and enjoy the holidays. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Ms. Scott Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To my colleagues that have already spoken, thank you all very much. It's been a pleasure. 15 years ago, I moved here to Middletown, and for half of those, over half of those 15 years I've spent sitting on this dais, I have had the privilege of serving with 13 people. Tom Allen, the late Jim Armbruster, Bill Becker, Dora Bronston, Leslie Ford, Josh LaBaw, Tony Marconi, Ann Mort, Joe Mulligan, Dan Picard, David Shavoni, A.J. Smith, Mayor Mulligan, and I got the chance to serve as Vice Mayor. I got to serve with two City Managers, Judy Gilliland and now Doug Atkins, two Council Clerks, Betsy Parr, Amy Skank, and a wonderful City Staff. It's the staff, you know, we get to kind of do ride-alongs with them and see a day in the life of, and I so have appreciated that. To the new members coming on Council, I wish you the extreme best, and if I can ever help you in any way, please feel free to call on me. And finally, to my husband, who has been my partner for the last 18 years and for eight years on this Council. If you are married, you cannot serve in any kind of capacity and not have the support of your spouse. And so he's in the audience, and I want to tell him publicly that I love him and that I thank him, and I'm looking forward to where life is going to take us next, because it's always been a journey and it's always been a ride. But it's been a privilege, it's been an honor, and it's been a pleasure to serve on the City Council for the last eight years. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Mulligan?
Yeah, well, I said a little bit before, but I'll just add, again, thanks for the kind words to my colleagues on Council and to Mr. Atkins, and it really has been a rewarding four years, and I've enjoyed every minute of it. It's a great opportunity. I would encourage anyone to step forward and take the opportunity to serve in this capacity. I offer congratulations to Lieutenant Chaley, Steinbrenner, Wright, and Scranton, another example of people who have made careers here at Middletown, and I think we're a better firefighting staff for it, and we're a better city to have that level of experience, so I congratulate them and look forward to their continued service. And with that, I'll wish everyone a very Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and Happy 2016.
Thank you. All right, I too, I have the chance to read those proclamations for both Anita and for Joe, and certainly do mean all that. It's been a privilege and honor to serve with you and alongside you. It's really a team effort to pull this together, and certainly appreciate all the time and dedication you've put into it, you both have. It's, you know, certainly has made the City, I think, a better place, and certainly appreciate and value the time and effort, certainly, you know, it's great. So I look forward to seeing you around and doing more and more, so greater things to come. I did want to mention a couple of things. Representative Tim Derrickson, who currently represents this district at the state representative level, is running for Congress, and he's sponsoring a free event tomorrow evening at the Wyndhamir. Encourage folks that might be interested in hearing or speaking to him or hearing what he has to say, to stop by. That begins at 5:30. I think they're going to have some caroling as well, too. I think Tim's going to be speaking around 6:30 and runs till 8:00, again, to the Wyndhamir, and it's open to the public. He's not looking or asking for donations, just wants to be able to share his word, and certainly appreciate what Tim's done for Middletown over his time at the State House, and want to wish him well, and glad he's taking time to visit with us here in Middletown. And I too would like to wish Merry Christmas and Happy New Year to everyone. It is certainly a great time to reflect of all the good things we have, as Mr. Picard said, and take a moment or two to share what we can with those less fortunate. Certainly an important time of the year, and certainly looking forward to a great 2016 here in Middletown. And with that, Mr. Cantwell, we can begin with our legislation for this evening.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have nine items of legislation on the agenda this evening. The first eight are emergency items that we request action on this evening. For that, I need a motion to waive the charter provisions as to ordinance numbers O-2015-74, O-2015-75, O-2015-77, ordinance number O-2015-79, O-2015-80, O-2015-81, resolution number R-2015-46, and resolution R. number, R-2015-47.
I move that the charter provision requiring reading on two separate days be suspended and that ordinance number O-2015-74, ordinance number O-2015-75, ordinance number O-2015-77, resolution number R-2015-46, resolution number R-2015-47, ordinance number O-2015-79, ordinance number O-2015-80, and ordinance number O-2015-81 be declared emergency measures and read one time only.
Second.
All right, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ms. Scott Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Ordinance number O-2015-74, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a third amendment to a contract with Cardinal ATC for demolition and remediation of the STM Ren paper mill site and declaring an emergency. If you'll recall, Mr. Atkins gave a presentation on this two weeks ago. This is to finish the remediation at the previous STM Ren site.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
One second.
Second.
Okay, any other discussion or comments? All right, Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ms. Scott Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2015-75, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a second amendment to the contract with Metropolitan Environmental Services Incorporated for remediation of the STM Ren paper mill site and declaring an emergency. Again, this is a second reading. Mr. Atkins gave a presentation two weeks ago. This is the second part of the remediation at the STM Ren site.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ms. Scott Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2015-77, an ordinance authorizing a development agreement between the City of Middletown, Commerce Corner LLC, and Atrium Medical Center, and declaring an emergency. This is a second reading, a presentation previously made regarding an electronic billboard on I-75.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion or comments? Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Scott Jones?
Abstain.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2015-79, this is a first reading of an emergency item, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an amendment to the contract with Pauldyne Incorporated for the purchase of polymer for use at the wastewater treatment plant for the year 2015 and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt? Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay.
Good evening again, Mayor. To alleviate some delivery issues we were having at the wastewater treatment plant, we have added an auxiliary tank for the polymer. This new tank has been filled, which means we have more polymer than usual this year because we were having trouble meeting delivery deadlines. Next year, the usage will be back to normal, but as part of adding the new tank and getting it filled, we are requesting $22,000 added to the contract carriers through the end of 2015 for polymer.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any questions for Ms. Jackins? Okay. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Scott Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2015-80, this is also a first reading of an emergency item, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing a contract for the transfer of city-owned property to the Middletown School District and declaring an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Mr. Atkins, I know we had a couple of discussions on this previously.
We have, Your Honor. We've been working on this for several months. There are several pieces, about five, that are going in different directions. Part of Barnett Park, owned by the City of Middletown, approximately nine and a half acres is going to the school district. The Lefferson Park ball fields, owned by the City of Middletown, will be going to the school district. It's about 13.3 acres. Lefferson Park parking lot and excess drives, approximately 1.8 acres. The remainder of Verity School property north of Lefferson Park, currently owned by the Middletown City School District, will be coming our way, and the former Roosevelt School site owned by the school district will be coming our way. These are both changes that help the school district with their new projects with the schools. They're going to use Lefferson Park as their new ball fields. We are going to take the Roosevelt side as it backs up into Sunset Park as green space for the moment until we decide what we want to do with it. These are a chance for both organizations to swap some land that would be a benefit to both organizations. This was passed by the school board last night and is ready for your action this evening.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Atkins?
No. One thing I'd like to make clear so that the public knows, the responsibility for the cost of the utilities for the Lefferson ball fields, which is the water, the sewer, and the electric, will transfer to the school district.
That's correct.
I had a number of questions called regarding that.
Okay. All right. Anything else? All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ms. Scott Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Ordinance number O-2015-81, also a first reading, an ordinance providing for the removal of parcels from a tax increment financing area created by the council pursuant to ordinance number O-2005142, to declare 75% of the improvements to those parcels to be of public purpose and exempt from real property taxation, to provide for the distribution of the applicable portion of those service payments directly to the Warren County Career Center, to create and provide for the deposit of the remainder of those service payments into a municipal public improvement tax increment equivalent fund, and to provide for payment of a portion of those service payments received by the city to the Middletown City School District as provided in a compensation agreement between that school district and the city to specify the public infrastructure improvements and costs to be paid from that fund, to approve and authorize the execution of a tax increment financing agreement to implement this ordinance and to declare an emergency.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. We're requesting at this time to remove the four town mall parcels from the existing town mall hospital tax increment financing district and place it in its own TIF district to support the redevelopment of the mall moving forward. We have been working with the owners of the mall to bring new businesses and redevelopment to that facility. As you're aware, we've had several nice openings this year with Gabriel Brothers, Burlington Coat Factory, and Planet Fitness is scheduled to open on December 31st. As the area continues to develop, there will be additional infrastructure improvements that will be needed. They've done a little bit on the outside, ring around it with paving. There are other parts of the parking lot lighting and other areas that need additional work. The creation of this new TIF district will allow the incremental improvements and increases of the property that occurred during 2015 to be captured, and it gives us an opportunity to work with the town mall owners to give them financing ability to further get improvements onto the property. We are asking for emergency passage tonight because we needed to get, number one, the school district agreement in place, which was done over the last month. Two, we needed to adopt at this meeting to be able to capture the 2015 improvements for all those stores that have been gone, and this is the last meeting to be able to do that. We have also been working with the mall owners to get a budget on not only what they've spent on this year, but what they have down the road that they believe they have coming, and new leasehold improvements, which allowed us to analyze the TIF district and see if it made sense long-term to even go through the effort of doing this. The answer is yes, it does. On a side note, the Warren County Career Center is not a part of the school agreement that we have with the Middletown City School District. They have been notified of this as part as required under by law.
Okay. Very good. Any questions for Mr. Atkins? All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Mulligan?
Yes.
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ms. Scott Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.
Mr. Picard?
Yes.
This next item is a first reading. It does not require any action on your part this evening. Ordinance number O-2015-82, an ordinance establishing a procedure for and authorizing an agreement with Buckston for assistance in retail recruitment.
Ms. Atkins?
Yes, Your Honor. One of the things that I saw when I was in Seattle at the National City Managers Conference was a presentation by Buckston on retail recruitment. It's a nice lesson that I brought back here, and we've done some work since then to recommend this tonight to you. Retail in general has a set list of demographics that they need to bring a new site. If you're a Starbucks and you want to come to Middletown, they have, and I'm making this up as I go, but in theory, they have 10 things that they need to bring a successful Starbucks to Middletown. And what they have found is if a new site has every one of these 10 things, they could be census data like so many people living within three miles of the store, a certain educational level of the people in the city, poverty levels, different things of the census. But what they've also found is there are things beyond the census that are critical to people like Starbucks and other retailers as to whether or not they're going to be successful. We all, as we go out and do our daily business, offer all kinds of electronic information out there on what we're buying, what groceries we buy, what kind of cars we buy, what we like to drink if we drink alcohol, those types of things, and Buckston purchases all that data. That's what they do. And what they do after they get that data is they create a map, a geographic demographic map of an area like Middletown. And what they might find is, when they, aside from the census stuff, they may find that 70% of Middletown people drive domestic cars and 30% drive foreign cars. They may find out that 60% drink beer and 40% drink wine, and they build this whole deep analysis of what Middletown would look like. And then what they do is they go to retailers and they sell that data to the retailers. And if you're Starbucks, they can go down the list and say, "Do you have all those 10 things that we like to have before we open a Starbucks?" And if you do, you could be in the running. If you have even nine of the 10, they have found that if you're missing even one of those, there's some question as to whether or not that store will be successful, and they will keep looking for that next location that has all 10 of the criteria they're looking on. And so Buckston works with retailers to do this. What they found about seven or eight years ago was that the reverse was true. When they built this demographic model of Middletown, not only could they work with retailers to look for sites in Middletown, they could also work with municipalities to find retailers that are looking for what we already have. The presentation they gave was a small company, a small city down in Tennessee in the middle of the Smoky Mountains. It was a town of about 13,000. And what they had found was, when they built their demographic model, they were able over a three-year period to bring in about 25 retailers to this small city completely in the middle of the mountains, Kohl's, Penny's, a number of chain restaurants, things that people wanted in the city, that they were able to put those two together by saying, "Look, city, you've got what they want. This is the way they need to see it." When Starbucks or somebody's looking at a site, they have a certain form that they're looking for the information so that they can quickly look down and see if you meet their criteria. This company does that, and they do it not only for retailers, but they do it with municipalities. The other thing I like about this is not only do they do it with national retailers, which they have a number of hundreds of national retailers that they work with, they also work with cities on regional retailers, like a skyline or something that's more in southwest Ohio, and they also work with shopping centers. Not only do they work at Middletown as a whole, but let's say in Brille Boulevard, we wanted to get more retailers to fill up some of the empty spots in the Brille Center. They would work with the demographics right around that area, and again, look at national and regional areas that would allow us, that would be attractive places for retailers to come to that area. They've asked for a three-year commitment. We do have the ability to cancel this contract after year one or year two if we choose to get out of it. It has some nice advantages. We have vetted them. We've called a number of their references. All of them said they do exactly what they say they can do. We've talked to some of their competitors, and what we have found is they can't do as much. While they have some talent, they have some expertise. Buckston is by far at the top of the line at what they do, and they have the best reputation, they have the best resources, and we would like to work with them for at least the next year, probably the next three. Normally, this would be an economic development type of activity, but I've got my economic development staff working hard on the airport and downtown and the East End, and things that are going to produce more manufacturing and higher-level jobs that improve our property values, that improve our income taxes, things like that. This is more, in many ways, for the citizens of Middletown necessarily than it is for, you know, if I bring a small retailer in that hires 20 people at a service, you know, at a Taco Bell wage or a service area wage, that's helpful for the people that are working there, and that's great. But what I'm trying to do is stop so our citizens don't have to get in the car and immediately get on 75 and go south, or immediately get on 75 and drive north to get a good restaurant, to get JCPenney's, to things that they want to do, the clothes they want to buy. We want to give them all the opportunities that we can to have them spend their money in town. So we are asking counsel for the opportunity to try this for a year, work with them, and see if we can't bring some more retail back to the city. Love to get Target back.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Atkins? All right. Thank you. Appreciate the update on that.
Thank you.
We have a couple of resolutions this evening?
Yes, Your Honor. That leaves us with the last two remaining items, resolutions. Resolution number R-2015-46, a resolution to make adjustments to appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the City of Middletown, Counties of Butler and Warren, State of Ohio for the period ending December 31st, 2015, and declaring an emergency. This is regarding the Housing Assistance Fund.
Do we have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Atkins?
Your Honor, I apologize for this. Earlier this month, we were working with HUD to clear out our Housing Assistance Fund as part of the effort to shut down Middletown Public Housing Agency. HUD and Finance worked out the numbers, got all the checks cut. We came to you and got permission to do it, and then after we were done, we realized that there was about $25,298.50 in program income that had come in that neither HUD nor the city had contemplated when they made the final break. And so we are asking for the chance to clean that up and close this account out at the end of the year, and we will need your approval to do that.
Okay. Any questions or comments? All right. Ms. Gank, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Bronston?
Yes.
Ms. Scott Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Mulligan?
Yes.